Okay, I figured we'd get started. We still have, oh, I guess, pretty much everybody that registered. Yeah, Ted from Central Office and Jean. Okay, well, I'll get started. Um, okay. Thanks to everyone for joining us today. This is our, you know, we used to call this the RTP implementation work group. We're now calling these RTP implementation work sessions. Very important distinction. Um, just trying to make it clear that basically anybody from the MPO committees are welcome to join it. We're not, we, you know, we want to have these as kind of open, open-ended informal meetings where we kind of present some information, but you know, and I, I don't want this to be a presentation of me and Carrie talking to you guys, and then that's it. So, I have a, I have a pretty, a pretty bare bones PowerPoint with some broad strokes on it, but then we provided some meeting materials. Hopefully you've had a chance to review them. We'll go through some things, provide plenty of information and, okay, if you have questions, if you have things, whether it's things that you're just wondering now, or I've always wondered about tip development and maybe don't understand something that we talk about regularly. This is a great time to, to ask and get clarification on anything. So, um, I think first, we're a pretty small group, so we will do a round of introductions, just so that everybody knows, you know, just so we all know who's here. I'm Andrew Baumberger. I'm Executive Director here at Tri-County Hats Planning Staff.
Tanner Stroll, Transportation Community Planner here at Tri-County with Hat Staff.
Rebecca Winchoff, Transportation Planner with Tri-County and Hat Staff.
All right, we can, how about Carrie?
Good afternoon, Carrie Mullins, Penn Dot District Eight Planning and Programming Manager.
Jeff?
Um, yeah, this is Jeff Pure, Penn Dot District Eight Planning and Programming Unit.
And then Kyle?
Good morning or good afternoon, sorry, Kyle Snyder, Penn Dot District Eight Planner. Thank you.
How about, uh, David?
Hey, good afternoon, David Juve, Planning Manager, Rabbit Transit.
Beth?
Hello, it's Beth Needham. I'm also with Rabbit Transit. I'm a transit planner.
Uh, we can go to Jean.
Jean Fashi, Cumberland County Commissioner.
Kirk?
Uh, Kirk Stauder, Cumberland County Planning Director.
Uh, Ray?
Ray Palmer, Silver Spring Township Manager.
And then Jim?
Jim Turner, Perry County.
All right, I think I got everyone. My windows on Zoom were kind of shuffling as people would talk, so hopefully I didn't miss anybody. I don't think I did. There's not many of it, that many of it here. So, um, pull up my PowerPoint. I'm just gonna do the informal here. Oh, there. And I'm not gonna make it full screen, just because that's, I'm, I'm gonna plan on jumping back and forth a little between the PowerPoint and some of the files we have, and then, um, the mapping and all that kind of stuff. So I'm just gonna leave it here kind of in the working mode. Um, yeah, like I said, I will go through this. Uh, here's the agenda. Just introductions. Most of the time here, we'll spend on, on tip development. This is now as crazy as it sounds, the 27 to 2030 tip. Um, so, yeah, we'll spend the bulk of the time on that, but then I also, and I provided some materials in the, in the email earlier this week on, on that post of the RTP Post Adoption Questionnaire, and then our NEVI Community Charging Program Outreach that we're just kicking off. So, um, again, ask questions, provide input, opinions. You know, this is, this is a great chance for clarification. We've got, you know, us from Hats, Penn Dots here. Uh, you know, the transit people are here, so we kind of have all of the, all, all of the knowledge is here. So if you have questions, please don't hesitate. Okay, so like, as the, as we kind of showed there, first thing we want to talk about is our draft 2027, 2030 tip. Uh, generally, nothing has changed since the September Hats meetings. We had, we kind of touched on things there. Um, not the, the same thing, the same things that were true then are true now. Uh, nearly all of our tip funds are tied up in our carryover projects. Uh, those can, carryover projects are projects that are already programmed on the tip. Uh, they won't be completed by the end of, of the current tip, and will need to be carried over into, into, into future fiscal years. Um, and just as a reminder, there is a link actually in the email, and I'll put it in the chat. Hold on a second. A link to the interactive mapping, um, so that you can explore some of this stuff. Again, this is in the email I sent. Uh, but there it is again. Um, so we can go to the top here. This is what it looks like when you, when you first click, click through it. So, uh, you know, the, the carryover projects, again, make up almost all of our tip uh, funding for the upcoming, for this upcoming update. Uh, typically, carryover projects cover a large portion of our, of our tip. Um, but this year, they're taking up a little more than usual uh, for a few reasons. Uh, the IAJA, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, um, that passed just as we were kind of finishing up this process for the 21 tip. So we programmed a bunch of new projects with the new money we had. Those projects are now all in construction. So, all of those things we programmed, almost all of them had a couple of years of pre-construction design, right away utility, all of those, all of those other non-construction phases. They've now worked through the system. They're now on the tip. It's construction projects. So they're, you know, they're consuming a lot of money here, kind of on the back end of those, of, of that schedule. Uh, another, you know, very important consideration here and reason why carryover is a little more than normal is inflation. Again, these projects take years to progress through the processes. So a lot of these, a lot of the projects that are going into construction now came onto the tip or were, or when they did come out into the tip, were based on pre-pandemic kind of cost estimates and prices. So, you know, all of those inflation-related costs have been slowly kind of chipping away, and they, they just eventually kind of consumed uh, an abnormal amount of tip funding, and that kind of puts us in the position we're in. Uh, then kind of the third broad, uh, reason are locally-led projects, which are primarily through our RTP implementation grant, and our local bridge line item. Uh, this up, kind of the current tip and this upcoming tip, both have, and Carrie will back me up here, have a lot of locally-led projects on them. Those locally-led projects are especially prone to sort, to kind of over or underestimating on the front end, and then leading to cost increases on the back end. So even in a kind of normal inflation cycle, that's a thing we expect. When you have kind of, you know, generationally high inflation for a few years, that's gonna hit those projects even harder. Um, so, kind of all three of those have led us to the, to the situation we're in, where we don't, we frankly, just don't have a whole lot of money to work with. It's all tied up in existing projects. Um, on the aid project, so we have very, since Market Street Bridge is upward, I think, around 100 and 20 million dollars. So that's more than an entire year. That, uh, so, you know, again, that's gonna, it's gonna limit our ability to program new projects once those things are hitting construction. Uh, we also have things like the McClay Street Bridge, Riverlands, Middletown Road, 30 safety improvements, just recently found out of a, of a relatively urgent situation in Newport on the Route 34 Bridge up there. That's gonna be a fairly large project. So, you know, all of these kind of major projects, again, kind of undercutting our ability to to program new projects moving forward. Um, the one thing we do have, uh, that the, the district kind of brought forward is these county culvert replacements, which will focus on, you know, those small, small structures, but that are in, in major need of, of attention and, and work. They can provide a little bit more detail on that in a minute. Um, and then kind of hanging over all of this is, is the, is the current federal legislation situation. Uh, the IAJA are also known as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, expires next September 30th, uh, which means the day this tip takes effect is the day we need new transportation funding legislation at, at the federal level. Uh, and I, you know, based on the current environment in Washington, uh, we don't think it's kind of wise or appropriate to be particularly aggressive or optimistic when it comes to, uh, kind of available funding for newly programmed projects. Our goal and intention has been to, to be conservative, maintain flexibility, and kind of manage expectations, not get people expecting a project that then funding falls through and we have to change course. So, um, rather be kind of conservative at, at this time, and then react once we know what we're reacting to. Uh, and hopefully, we will get new legislation in a timely manner, but I mean, I think we need to prepare for the, for the possibility that we don't really know what's gonna be happening, even when it's kind of already happening. Um, so, that's kind of the expanded version of what we talked about at, at the Hats meeting. Um, does anybody have any questions? Broad comments, anything like that?
Andrew, just, I think I talked about this briefly. Just wanted to clarify maybe with Carrie or somebody. The county culvert replacements. You know, we started a, a small bridge project here in Cumberland. I know that Dolphin has a similar project that are focused on bridges that are eight to 20 feet length and aren't subjected to NBIS. Is that what that's focusing on, or is it, is it something different?
Kirk, it'll be state, estate assets, structures, um, you know, pipes, small culverts. And what the whole idea behind it is the tip dollars, A185 appropriation, A185 bridge. We can purchase material, and we can pre-cast some of these structures with our department force people at our sheds during the winter time, when they're, you know, we're downtime. And then in the springtime, we can go out and replace these, uh, structures with our department force, and the labor costs will be paid out of the county maintenance budget. So basically, the tip's paying for the material and, you know, anything we need to get there, and then the labor is paid through our, um, county maintenance forces. It cuts down on having to go out for bid. Um, and we're using state dollars, so we don't need to follow any of the federal bidding and procurement procedures where we would have to, you know, go out with low bid and whatnot. It's, it's a cost savings, um, uh, idea that we want to try here with, with our available uh, funds from the county and, and the tip here. It's a very small amount. We're gonna go at a hundred thousand a county to do design, and then it'll be 200,000 for the actual material purchase and whatnot. We're actually gonna meet internally next week to kind of start looking at what we gotta do, and we may, Andrew, and, and and all the other members of Hats, we may actually try to start Harrisburg's design sooner with some of the tip dollars we have now, the hundred thousand. Um, so stay tuned on that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Kirk?
Yes, yes, it does. Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, yep.
Are there any other broad, kind of broad stroke, you know, comments or questions? We'll dig in a little deeper here into some of the details. Um, okay. So, th- these, and, and hope, you know, hopefully, none of this is brand new to any of you. Uh, but the, so what we're looking at here is these allocation tables. This basically shows every funding type, how much is, is allocated or available, how much is, is attached or programmed already, and then kind of what the difference is, what's remaining, what would theoretically be available for a new project. As you can see, there's not a lot, there, there's a lot of zeros and a lot of relatively small numbers, particularly in that, in those first two years. So, you know, we're doing the, the tip, and we're certainly looking at all four years, but, um, you know, we do this in two-year cycles, so, uh, you know, we really want to focus on those first two years, and as you can see, there's basically certainly not enough to start to, that we would want to program a new project in those first two years. You know, it's, it's all in the tens of thousands, so, um, or at most. Uh, I did wanna, you know, and highlight, again, going back to what my comments about the federal legislation, all of those allocation, everything listed kind of at the beginning, at the, the first line of all of these funding types is the allocation. That's basically what we end up with out of the federal legislation for the federal funding types. Not all of these are federal funds, but most of them are. Um, the le, the federal legislation could completely change the numbers in the, in those allocation ta, you know, the, the number that, that's initially available. They can change the type of projects that are available under that. So, um, you know, this is what we have to kind of plan and move forward with, but we don't know if that's what we're going, if, if that's gonna be kind of reality once we're actually into this tip, if that makes sense. So, um, Carrie, can you walk through this a little bit? And, you know, we don't need a ton of detail, but just a broad overview of, of each of these funding types, just so that everybody knows, you know, generally what they're used for, that kind of stuff.
Sure. Can you just zoom in a little bit? So I can see, so I can follow in order which ones we have. So, as Andrew mentioned, you know, the allocation balances, that's decided by a, uh, work group at a statewide level. That involves, uh, some different MPOs, RPOs, FHWA, um, and our Penn Dot people. That's the financial work group. Um, no, nothing has changed as far as the formulas from the last update, um, for the 2025, whatever we had there. We continued that with the 27 update. So as far as the funding goes here, so the first one there is, it says, "Bridge yearly allocation state." So you would notice that if you would be familiar with the tip, that's 185. It's appropriation 185. So those dollars are only eligible for struck bridges. A state-owned bridges is the 185. You'll see 183, which is the match for our locals. So when we have our locals on there, you see a tip that says 183, that would be coming from this state yearly allocation, uh, for bridge. The next one is you go down is Bridge Formula Program. Uh, that's known as BRIP. We call it BRIP now as part of the IIJ bill, or the, I should just say the infrastructure bill, as it's called now. Um, that was a new bridge category that came out of that. That replaced the Bridge On system. So there are eligible for certain types of structures depending on functional class length, our span length, you know, any to 20 feet or more. Uh, you'll see that on a lot of our, our state-owned structures when you look at a tip. The BOF, or the Bridge Off, yearly allocation federal, that is known as BOF, Bridge Off System. Off system means that we can use those funds on local bridges if eligible, and also there's certain minor collector, um, functional classes. They would be considered low ADP, four-digit SRS would be eligible for the Bridge Off. Carbon Reduction, yearly allocation federal, and Carbon Reduction Urban yearly. This is new. This came out of the bill, um, the infrastructure bill, and that's to cut down on carbon reduction, of course. Um, only certain things are eligible. One of your projects that we're gonna be actually going out to bid with here in a couple of weeks, we're doing a concrete preservation on Route 11 and 15 Upper Army Nola to 81, and at that interchange, we're actually using carbon reduction funds to change the lights um, to LED to become more energy efficient. That was actually something you, your MPO was actually one of the first MPOs to get approved for carbon reduction funds when that first came out. And that project's gonna bid next week. So, those kind of things are there. They're used for, um, you know, intersection improvements if they're qualified. Also for, you know, you can, um, flex those to transit. My belief is with the new administration, uh, the Trump administration, anything that was related to Biden is probably gonna be axed. I don't see this program coming back unless there's, uh, reauthorization of the current transportation bill and they keep it. If there's a new transportation bill, I could see this going away. Just my opinion, but it's the way things have gone. We see a lot of new rulings with the new administration, you know, and the, and the Biden administration. So carbon reduction is almost like the next one is CMAC. Um, that's congestion mitigation air quality. Uh, that is to cut down on, you know, ozone. Also, we use those for, uh, say, intersection improvements, corridor improvements, you know. We do in a, say, example, Carlisle Pike. Um, if we wanted to do some work out there with timing and whatnot and corridor, you know, CMAC's available for that, that kind of thing. Um, that has to be ultimately approved by our Central Office folks through an application that shows it actually does reduce emissions and whatnot. Uh, so there are some strings attached to that. A lot of that funding also on your tip, you can see some of it gets rolled over to transit. Uh, you know, you can use those things for bus purchases, uh, certain other transit, uh, components that need funding that are eligible, uh, through CMAC.
Carrie, I also, I, I just want to add, I just want to add, CMAC is what pays for SRT. We use CMAC for SRTP as well.
Yes. So the next one there is the Highway Yearly Allocation State. That will be also known as Appropriation 581. So if you see it on the tip, that $581 is a state highway dollars. Uh, the, the purpose of this 581 is to be used on, you know, paving, any roadway improvements. Um, it can be used on bridges. We have used it on bridges in the past. Uh, I'm not a big fan of using it on bridges unless we need to, because I don't feel that when I took over the tips here for District Eight, that we were, we were extremely bridge-heavy. We're focusing all on bridges, and we don't have any paving projects. And the AS, the International Roughness Index, and our RI and our OPI, which is the overall pavement index, they have gone down a little bit, and we can't get to a point where we have great bridges, but we have bad roads. We need some sort of balance. So, you know, going forward, I, I, you know, talk with Andrew. We've been switching a lot of the, the funds around to get in line, that the 581 lines up with the, with the paving and the construction jobs that we have, the, the, I would say reconstruction or concrete rehabilitation, things like that that need to be done. They should be using your 581. Now, 581 is also a match. You know, sometimes when we're at 80% for NHPP or STP funds or STU, we're not 100% federal. If we're 80/20, the match has to come from 581. So you see that on some projects too. Uh, next one is the NHPP, which is only eligible to be used on NHS routes. Um, the NHS system, you know, is your bigger routes, Route 11, Route 15. Uh, you know, there are some other ones, uh, the Market Street Bridge actually is a NH, uh, NHS route, so that's eligible for NHPP. So your bigger route, say, a 322, uh, 422, those routes are all eligible for NHPP. Fortunately, in Hats, you have quite a few NHPP routes, so we don't have a hard time spending it. You go around the state and look at other regions, like go to your, your south Adams County. All we have is Route 15, Route, a little bit of Route 94 and Route 30. How much work can you do on those roads? Um, just using the NHPP. I can't use it anywhere else. So, uh, fortunately, in Hats, we're able to use it a lot of places. Uh, skip down, Andrew. That other there is, is, uh, that's probably earmarked funny. That just shows up on that sheet. Um, next one would be PROTEC. So PROTEC is a federal fund that was also, came out of the, the infrastructure bill, and that's for, you know, resiliency. Uh, we do have a project in Hats, and that's what's showing there. It comes from a statewide pot. It's not a allocation that comes to the MPO. That is up on 1115, uh, around the Anola rail yard. There's a retaining wall that needs to be replaced and repaired. So we were able to get these PROTEC funds from that. Um, again, it's a part of the bill from the previous administration. I don't know if it's gonna be around uh, for the next go-around, our next bill. But, uh, we'll see. I, I think it's a good program, um, because uh, you can use it for a lot of things. You know, if you're having a flooding issue and there's X amount of, the data shows that there's X amount of floods in a region or, or an area, well, maybe PROTEC funds could be used to make a bigger culvert, say, or the structure that we're gonna replace it, it becomes bigger. We can make that eligible for PROTEC funds, but it comes from a statewide uh, pot, and we only get in the district about six or seven projects each go-around. The next one there is the Safety. That's also known as the H-SIP funding, and that's for safety jobs. You know, we go through our job applic, our safety applications. We have to submit those to Central Office. Basically, it's based upon a ratio, uh, cost of fatal and fatal and injury crashes, um, and compared to property damage-only crashes. So there's a lot with the formulas, benefit cost analysis. Um, it's a good source of funding, but it's also a hard source of funding to spend because you're only budgeted and allocated to a certain amount, and your application fee might be at 5 million, but you're only approved for H-SIP at 3 million. Then you gotta go find another funding source to backfill that. Um, they're still working on some things. There's some improvements coming with the H of Andrew, and his team heard about some of those improvements that are coming at our Planning Partners Meeting a few weeks ago in State College. So, I, I see that maybe the next tip update might be a little different with just how the process works with the state. Um, and we'll see what comes out of a federal level with the new bill.
Well, and we're, and we're actually not, you know, and people that have been around a while probably remember that for, for a long time, we barely u, we, we had real trouble using our H-SIP. So, while it is a frustrating program, I'm happy just that there's very small numbers here in bold, which means we aren't leaving money on the table. We are using these, these projects. Um, I think right now, most of the H-SIP, well, we had, we did a couple of things. We had uh, Kittleson, one of our consultants, go through our program projects a few years ago and look at H-SIP eligibility kind of across the board and identified a bunch of already programmed projects that could be already programmed projects that could be shifted to H SIP funding. So that was good. And then we did work with the district and identified two roundabouts kind of between Mechanicsburg and, and Carlisle. I think they're both on 641.
Yes.
Think so. Yeah. And then there's a, another roundabout out at, um, is it 341 and?
341 and 743.
So a couple, couple roundabout improvements. And then one of the things that came out of our, you know, there, when you get into safety planning, there's a ton of data and you look at it all different ways. So our, our SS4A plan, the, the kind of requirements and the focus of SS4A is a little different than the requirements and the focus of H SIP. SS4A was looking at kind of the, the high injury network, which is a very, kind of specific analysis and the way you derive that. We then looked at where we had high injury network segments that, that intersected with, with kind of H SIP eligibility and, and H SIP eligible locations. And that's then what went to for SS4A supplemental funding. In, in June, we submitted that as hats, staff, we submitted that as a discretionary grant application to the SS4A program again. So we're hopeful to get kind of a, actually a pretty good, I think we applied for $500,000. It's five different project locations. Then we would try to do as much feasibility planning. I don't think you can quite do design, design work, but you can do basically right up until you're really starting design. So you can do alternatives analysis. You know, we can make sure the scope and the purpose and need and all those things are, are kind of fully flushed out. But that will help, that will also kind of help, help, hopefully help us spend down that, that those H SIP dollars in a, in the most effective way.
And, and as Andrew mentioned, the H SIP, we do have some H SIP dollars, Andrew, available on this tip, which remind me, I have to talk to you after this meeting. If you could stay on, just real quick, I wanted to get some ideas from you. Forgot to talk about it yesterday. So, um, so moving along here with the fundings. The STP funds, they're federal funds. They're, I would say the most, they're the easiest to spend and get approval to use. We like to use those on paving projects and, you know, construction, reconstruction, something like that, but they can be used on bridges also. You know, and, and they're, they have a lot of eligible eligibility requirements. So if you go down to the urban, that would be considered STU, which is really STP funds. But it's designated because you have a large urbanized area in your MPO. So those funds technically should be spent within the urbanized area. But we're always allowed to spend them throughout the entire MPO region. So it's just not for, you know, a certain municipality to spend. You know, federal highways allows the entire, the urbanized, the urban funds to be spent throughout the MPO. Now, the last couple of tip cycles, you had your RTP projects and they were carved out, the funding was carved out of the STU funds. We don't have anything going forward for this tip with the RTP implementation grants. Basically what the STP, STU funds are covering is the increases we've had in some of the original estimates. And, you know, we do come to the meeting and talk about those. Some of those locally led projects have a hard time getting to the finish line and some of the estimates are, are the best. And at the end, you know, we need to increase them with tip dollars. But that's what those urban funds are. They're really STP funds or just go by STU. And then the final one, it would be the second from the bottom there would be the TAP funds. That's your tasks set aside. For some reason, Andrew, I don't know why that's in a negative.
Yeah, those are right. Cause I know, I know we don't, we have funds committed so that there's something, I, I meant to tell you that. There's something going on there, but I, you know, I would say similar to Carrie's comments about some of the, the more carbon oriented funding sources. I'm not real optimistic that dedicated bike ped funding is going to be, if we get brand new legislation, that dedicated bike ped funding is going to be part of it. And the specifics of the TAP program, you know, all these other funding formulas can, or funding flavors or, or types of funding can pay for all of the construction or all of the phases of the project, whether it's, you know, PE, bio design, utility right of way up to construction. TAP is different. TAP can, I think it can pay for a little bit of right of way, but basically TAP is only to be used for construction. And there's no financial local match. Your local match is essentially the, the local sponsor has to do all of the pre-construction work. So we're especially kind of fearful of programming things on with TAP funds for, you know, out in 2028, 29, 30. Having a municipality think they have construction funds so that they then start expending their funds, doing the design, doing all of the pre-construction work to get it ready for construction. Then new legislation passes and their construction funding is not made part of that legislation. Yeah, that, that's why, I, again, not, I, it just doesn't seem wise to be particularly aggressive in those in programming funds or programming projects with those kinds of funds right now.
Now, Andrew, the only project, and I see it's in a negative, they will have to make an adjustment. That project is the Lemoine, I believe, Third, Third Street.
Yeah.
Is the, the only one that's left from the cycle and it's not going to be bid till the next tip from what I've been told through the project delivery issues. So, and realistically, we're, we're seeing at a statewide level, you can submit, the application period's over. We just met with a lot of the municipalities and sponsors that submitted here the last few weeks. You're not going to get much for a million dollars these days.
Yeah.
I mean, people are coming in with, you know, $1.5 million. I know Carlisle normally comes in for, you know, some applications. They're, they're at the max. And, and they're, the, the project's not 1.5 million total. It might be four million, but they're getting money from trying to get money from DCED to try and get DC and our other grants. You're not going to get much for a million. So I, I don't know why they, they hand it out to the MPOs and, and just give them that much money. I think it's a waste of time, but is what it is. There's got to be a better way to formulate that, that makes sense.
Well, I think what we'll see moving forward is one of the things we kind of looked at with the, with our active transportation plan is trying to use those TAP dollars for bigger projects so that we are, so that we aren't programming two, three projects every year with TAP funding that we're kind of doing the opposite and maybe finding a, a larger project that's worth, that is, you know, really worth the federal funds and, and all the headaches and red tape it takes to spend them and, and using it to fund that instead. Hopefully reduce some of those project delivery issues. So, um, okay. Do you have anything else, Carrie, on the, on the, the allocation table stuff?
No, I mean, you know, and, and some projects statewide get, get TAP funds, or not TAP funds, spike funds. A lot of the spike funds in the hats MPO region have gone to the interstate, basically. Because I mean, we got South Bridge, we got all the sections of 83. And, you know, we're getting, I'm saying billions of dollars in spike, just in hats. So we're lucky there is an interstate program because if not, you know, hats may have to foot some of that bill and then you'd have to, you know, your other assets would suffer. So the interstate program really helps your region out, I would say.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, if we, I mean, on, on this, on this tip, I think, and we, and just to be clear, you know, all of the stuff we've been talking about is only for the highway bridge tip. So there's also a public transit tip that I was gonna, in a couple, in, in a little bit here, I'm gonna ask Dave and Beth for just a brief little update on that. But then there's also the interstate tip, which anything that, that's, that's on the mainline interstate, that gets programmed through that. So all of the South Bridge, all of the 83 work, anything that's on 81, that's all completely separate from, from kind of the discussion we're having here. And just, you know, Carrie said, if we didn't have that tip now, we'd probably get a bunch more money because they wouldn't be, we'd be divvying up a larger pot. But we have $3 billion total on the interstate tip and just, just this four years, I think, or I, it, we have a very large amount and we get 100 million on the tip for the highway bridge. So if we had to fund interstate improvements or a highway bridge tip, that would severely constrain everything we could do. So yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm very grateful that I sometimes wish we had a little more input in the process, but I'm, I'm very, I, I, I appreciate the, the setup of, of central office managing that interstate tip. I think that's the best approach to that.
And, and one thing, Andrew, we did talk about this yesterday. I just wanted to mention it to the group. When you look at the program currently, you see that, and the interstate program, you know, we talk South Bridge. Market Street is on the hats tip. That's going to be going out to bid here in 2027. Going to be a, a long project, but when it's done, it's going to be done for a long time. You go up, you're going to have to do something with some sort of treatment at some point to Harvey Taylor Bridge. Which we did put that into bridge candidates for, I believe, either preservation or rehab. In a couple of years, we're going to have to look at doing that when we cycle through these, but you have the Wade Bridge, that's on the interstate. You go up to 322 with Clark's Ferry, that's programmed. We also have the large bridge up there at Newport 34. That's programmed over the Juniata. So you're, you're gonna have a lot of big projects on your tip here in the next couple of years. But taking care of some of your bigger assets, then after that, you look to it, you're going to have that capacity start to, you know, add up where you have funds to spend on other stuff. But you have to kind of look through to the, you know, the plan, call the planning, you gotta look through the plan and say, okay. You know, I gotta wait about six years till a lot of this stuff clears out. But then we're going to have a chance to take those projects that you've all been participating in with the RTP pipeline and whatnot, and those can start to advance. But now, now you have that log jam. It's, it's happened all over in all different counties and districts and not only Pennsylvania, other states. So it just happens and hat, hat seems to be in that, that spot right now. So.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Jeff from the district. Just, just wanted to mention, Andrew, that, that is fixed on those allocation charts. It is zeroed out in the first two years there. And then it goes 600,000 in period three. So, and then everything's the same after that. I did adjust that and everything is zeroed out there for that tap.
I, I'm, I, I, I apologize. That's my fault. I, I did. For, for the record, everybody, Jeff gave me the new tables and I forgot to put them in here.
I just noticed the date, yeah.
They are available here. They're right. So yeah, you can see here. Okay. Yes.
Okay. And yeah, just in case anybody was asking to, the period one up there starts 2027 and so forth. So just, just so that you know, for the periods up there, yeah, they never put the years.
But I, and, and Jeff, thanks for pointing that out because as you can see there, if you look at the PowerPoint in, you know, thi- this is based on mid-August. We did have some funding left here in STU, which is, again, this is that very flexible funding source. We had a decent chunk there, but that's already been divvied up and, and distributed among some other projects to where now we don't really have enough that we would become, you know, $750,000. Well, I, I would appreciate it. Isn't really enough to start, you know, to program a new project, certainly with federal funds. Things, they, even if they start at 750, they don't, they don't stay at 750. They become much larger. So. Okay. Um, but and I'm so glad I switched to this. The next thing I just wanted to scroll through and kind of show, you know, again, we have this interactive mapping. Now is kind of the time, if anybody has any questions or comments about what's on here. Again, these are mostly, you know, this is the draft 2730 tip. Most, almost all of these are already on the, the 25 to 28 tip. So there's nothing really new here. I'll point out a couple, you know, important projects. We do have Middletown Road. And when you click on this, you'll come up. You get some, uh, you know, you get some general information, estimated cost, estimated let date, that kind of stuff. So we have Middletown Road. We do have the 34, uh, safety improvements in Perry County. We have, I don't know, you know, Clark's Ferry Bridge and, and there is this, this is Riverlands. Clark's Ferry is, yeah, the bridges show up as these points, just FYI. The, the roadway and bike ped improvement show up as, as the red, the red dots are the, the, the lines. Not sure why that's not. Oh, right. So again, Market Street Bridge, these are two very large projects. Shows up as two because each bridge is its own separate project. They will certainly be advancing as one big project. Got the Lemoine bottleneck. That should be advancing next year. So are there any questions or comments about a specific project or anything we've talked about so far? Okay. So keep moving here. Again, new projects. This is just those box culverts that Carrie, Carrie talked about. So the last thing I just wanted to mention here was, so we're being conservative, we're being flat, we're, we're trying to stay as flexible as possible. Well, what happens, you know, if and when we do get new legislation and we do have funding available? You know, what, then what? Well, that's where our project pipeline comes in. Hopefully everybody knows, is aware of our project pipeline. If you're not, it's how we solicit, evaluate and prioritize transportation needs in the region. Everything, the needs are evaluated against 10, the 10 focus areas in our, in our regional transportation plan, safety, congestion, active transportation, freight, all of those types of kind of aspects of transportation. Uh, within the RTP, we evaluate municipally submitted needs as well as things taken from plans and studies. And then during tip development, we get what the district calls their candidate projects, which is all of the, all of the kind of asset management driven needs and potential projects needs and potential projects. Uh, that we then feed that into the same project pipeline system. And that gives us a score that we can kind of compare apples to apples and, and look at things, you know, at least objectively side by side. Uh, but I, I do want to be clear that this is an objective analysis, but it just serves as a starting point uh, for the discussions. And really for these work sessions. Once we know the amount and type of funding that we're working with and that we have available, we'll be holding in more of these work sessions. And we provide more, you know, additional materials on kind of what we're decide, you know, what kinds of things we need to decide. And here's how things rank kind of relative to those, to that available funding or, or project type or whatever, whatever kind of is framing the decision we need to make. Um. So that, that's kind of where we are right now. Like I said, we, no- nothing's really changed since the hats meetings. The, the tip is generally gonna be the carryover tip. Um. And then once we get, what, once we know what we're dealing with from a federal standpoint, we will try to react, you know, react, uh, based on that. But we don't know what that's gonna look like, so doesn't, it, we, we can't really react until we know what we're reacting to. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is the R T P implementation grant program. It's mentioned a couple of times. You know, we ran a, we ran two cycles of it with relatively, the first was very small projects. That, then we, we had an issue, we bumped up kind of the floor and, and did, I think we raised it to two hundred thousand dollars is the minimum project. Uh, to be frank, those are still too small projects for federal funding. And we're having issues kind of across the board with them of projects that come in. And I'm sure they legitimately think they're gonna cost four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. But by the time they go through all of the processes, do all of the, all of the reviews and all of the additional work that's required to use federal funds, those four hundred thousand dollar projects are no longer four hundred thousand. They turn into seven, eight, or, you know, they double, sometimes triple in cost. And that's some of the issues we're having with these cost increases. So our kind of staff recommendation is to change the implementation grant program to focus more on planning studies. The idea would be to, uh, and we've applied for supplemental funding through our U P W P. We're s- still waiting on word on that. I'm guessing that due to the, to the state budget that we don't have any word on that. Although Ted is on now, so I can put him on the spot. I think.
I, 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 I think you're right there, Andrew. The, the wheels are not turning at the moment. And I, I, I predict that once we get a budget, that the gears will start turning again.
Okay. So the idea though, if we were to secure that funding, would be that we would take project, but hot, things that are scoring highly on the project pipeline and use that funding to do planning studies on things that are having, if you remember, if you remember when we were doing the R T P, one of the things we added to the pipeline this time was what we called project readiness. If we have things that are scoring highly but have low project readiness, this would then be a funding, you know, a, a funding source for some of those planning feasibility, alternatives, analysis, doing a lot of the work that we need to do so that when it's going to Penn Dot, we know what the scope of the project's gonna be. You know, the, we have, we have a lot of this stuff figured out so that we don't have these cost increases. So that we, you know, as many of the decisions as possible can be made kind of collectively through the planning process before it's getting into project development. Think the more that happens, the better. And so the idea would be to kind of shift the implementation grant to planning studies that, that, that kind of pursue that. And for construction, uh, you know, the, the, the the pipeline is the avenue for, for program projects for construction. And I think that needs to be more of the focus instead of frankly, the, the implementation grid became kind of a back door around the pipeline. So I'd rather, you know, if you want federal funding through the tip, there's a way to do that and it's the project pipeline. So, does anybody have any thoughts or questions about that?
Yeah, Andrew, this is Kirk. I, I agree with, you know, everything you just said there, especially the, the way of the tip, I think. Previously, we had some projects kind of not, it wasn't underhanded by anyone. It kind of sneaked through, they had some studies and stuff and kind of get, get moved up uh, versus going through the project pipeline, which is our, our tool to do that. So I know I'm supportive of using that program for, more for studies and then following the traditional process we have in place to get to the tip.
Okay. Thanks, Kirk. Does anybody else? Okay, well, I don't, I don't, you know, we'll, we'll, I don't know that we are, we're certainly not taking any action or anything today. Uh, I, I, this will come up again once, once we do have some funding to make a decision is probably when we will present it as a formal decision to be made. Um, in the meantime, it's just funding that it came from tip funding, it's just going back to tip funding. So we don't really have to do anything right now. And as we've said a thousand times already today, we don't really have room to do anything anyway. So, uh, yeah. Um, before we move on from the tip, I did wanna, I mentioned Jeff and, or, I'm sorry, David and Beth are both on. Do you guys have anything from a tra- from a transit tip perspective?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have anything, it's terribly exciting or important to add. I would just say that, um, as Carrie had alluded to, really, we only come and solicit some of the C Mac funding for bus replacements. Uh, heavy focus on state of good repair, so sort of keeping up with maintenance rather than an expansion or improvements. Um, I know that we do have that, uh, high intensity mobility corridor project that we're trying to the, move along a little bit and we'll see what, where opportunities arise in that end. But yeah, we're, we're sort of on a status quo ourselves. And again, our process is a little different from the, the more traditional workflow of the highway bridges. Um, you know, we very closely work through Penn Dot B P T annually to review some, um, unconstrained to constrained plans. So ours is a much more annualized process, I, I would say than the traditional four to twelve-year modeling. Um, but yeah, now with a minute in mind, I, I don't have any major updates. Thank you.
Okay. And then I just, the last thing on the tip, I'll go down to, oh, no one zoomed in, just the schedule moving forward. Um, we will be finalizing the draft tip over the next few weeks. Um, we have to have it done and into central office by the end of the year. Uh, I, I suspect and Jeff and Carrie and even Kyle, I, 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 I'm, I'm assuming that will be presented to hats, not for action, but just for a kind of consensus approval, informal, if, if nothing else, that, yeah, we're comfortable with this moving, moving on in the process that, at, at the December hats meetings. Um. Then in February, it'll come, you know, you kind of early in the year, hat staff will meet and, and will meet with district and, and central office to kind of go through the tip, answer any questions. It'll then come back to hat, once it kind of has its initial central office approval. It'll come back to hats, uh, in February for a vote to go to, to air quality conformity. Then for April, it'll come back with air quality conformity, hats will vote to send it to public comment. That'll happen in May. Then for the June meetings, it'll come back. That's the official adoption. So hats members will get three shots to vote at the, vote on this tip. Uh, so, uh, you'll certainly see this a bunch more times. Um, it'll continue evolving a little bit and the numbers will certainly change, I'm sure, but the broad strokes will not. That, the, the tip is basically set. I think at this point. And then again, first day of, of the new tip is, is is the first day of federal fiscal twenty-seven, which is actually October of twenty-six. So um, yeah, that, that's the schedule moving forward. Does anybody have any final chance for tip? All right, we're a little over time, so I'll go quickly. Uh. Part of the email I sent out was a, was a R T P post-adoption questionnaire. Just some broad questions, we're trying, you know, we wanna make, make the R T P process and everything as good as we can. We want your input. Um, if you have something that you think we should know that's not necessarily captured by one of those questions, feel free to let us know. Um, if you just think you've seen something somewhere else that you think is a good idea, you know, we'll take any input. We tried to craft some questions of the things we, we are particularly focused on, but we'll certainly take any, any input anybody has. We cer- we, we certainly appreciate it. Uh, so that's the R T P post-adoption questionnaire. Last thing uh, is the Hats NEVI Community Charging Program. NEVI is the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. Uh, Penn Dot has, has gone through a couple rounds of NEVI funding. The first two, or I guess the first two were focused on what they called their alternative fuel corridors, which were essentially the interstates. So making sure that there's, uh, high-speed E V charging along there kind of at fifty-mile intervals along the interstates. Uh, this summer, Penn Dot got its, its certification of full build-out for that. So I don't think all the projects are done, but, but the things have been approved that will, once constructed, um, provide that, that connection along the interstates. They're now moving into their subsequent phases and that kind of finishing and getting that certification unlocks these other funding uh, avenues for the NEVI program. One, they call their cor- corridor connections. And I think those, those in, in our, in our area, in our region are eleven fifteen above Clark's Ferry and, um, three twenty-two above Clark's Ferry, basically both of those northern routes. So that's, that, that's another one. Then yet a third kind of part of the NEVI program is what we're focusing on, what they call community charging. So it's basically everywhere else. We get a pot of money looking at where, um, and Penn Dot's asking us for, for priorities based on two things. One is communities. So kind of where geographically do we want? Uh, do we want E V charging? And then things that they call use cases, which are essentially like types of land development. So it's shopping centers or grocery stores or large apartment buildings, dense downtowns with on-street parking. There's a list of my I'm in fifteen or so.
Yeah.
There's a list of a bu- of a bunch of those that we're kind of asking people to prioritize. You know, that we have, we have a survey here. I think it's pick your top five.
Yeah.
Use cases. And then we have a, an interactive map that allows people to drop points on where they would want E V charging. We're gonna take that, combine it with some analysis that we're gonna do kind of on our end. Um, and then we'll be having subsequent work meet, work sessions with you guys. Uh, kind of late winter into the spring to finalize those recommendations. And then we provide them and we'll provide those to Penn Dot probably next late spring or, or early summer. I think June is what we're kind of penciling in, at least at this point for a, for a target date. So, um, if you go to our, really, why I'm bringing this up here is we want your help for outreach uh, and getting the word out. So we actually have a website that we put together. It's a very short website. It's a very short, uh, survey as well. And look at the survey here. It's an interactive map that allows you to draw points. It's a couple of questions that are very simple. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, thirteen, yeah, thirteen questions. So shouldn't take that long. Um, we try to keep it kind of short and sweet. Uh, so we are asking though, if a- any help we can get with, with, uh, any help we can get with, with outreach assistance, we would greatly appreciate it. This is, it's on our webpage. It's in our newsletter. We're gonna start pushing stuff out here this week and into next week, really. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up and if you can help us, we really appreciate it. And for people, municipalities and counties, the, the more input we get from your location, the better that's gonna serve you when we're looking to prioritize things. So, um, there, there's kind of a incentive for you to help us get the word out here. So any questions? All right. Last thing is just if anybody has any other questions or comments or things they want to talk about, now's the time. Uh, if not, I, I can see the time here, so I won't kind of keep anybody any longer. If anybody wants to, you know, you know how to get ahold of us, please reach out. We'd like those, those questionnaires on the R T P uh, by the end of the month. Um, I'll put the NEVI outreach and we'll be back in touch about the tip. So other than that, thanks for your attention. Let, let us know if you have any comments or questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Hey Jeff, you wanna stay on with Andrew?
Um, sure. Yeah, I didn't know if you were still on, Carrie.